I'd like to remind everyone to make sure their cellphones are either turned off or vibrating. This meeting of the City Council and City Council now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'll ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to convene. Father, we thank you for our great city. Father, we thank you for those in attendance. Father, we ask that you bless this meeting. Father God, touch us all. Father God, grant us the wisdom to make good sound decisions for the betterment of the city as a whole. And Father God, we ask that you continue to bless this city and prosper this city and grow it. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Way you go.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting on June the 7th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of June the 3rd and the 9th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor?
Yes, sir. (inaudible) 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 Today, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration of the ending of slavery. The term a combination of the words June and 19th, on January 31st, 1865, Congress passed the 13th Amendment abolishing slavery. But it wasn't until June 19th, 1865, that the message of freedom reached all states of the Union. The celebration of Juneteenth, the National Day of Freedom, is a time of reflection, rejoicing, assessing self-improvement, and planning for the future. WMGJ Radio of Gaston, Alabama, will host the 25th Annual Juneteenth National Day of Freedom on Saturday, June the 18th, and Sunday, June the 19th, 2011, at the historic Central Carver High School campus in Gaston. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, on behalf of our City Councilmen and all citizens, do hereby proclaim the days of June 17th through June 23rd as Juneteenth National Day of Freedom Days in the City of Gaston, and express special commendation to Floyd L. Donald and the staff at WMGJ Radio for all the dedicated work performed to make this observation a reality in our area. I urge all residents to attend to various activities planned as we make this rededication to the principles of equality for all people.
The management and staff of WMGJ are very grateful for the proclamation that the city has bestowed upon us as we observe the 25th Annual Juneteenth Celebration. It is the oldest observance of this national holiday in the state of Alabama, and we are ever thankful for the assistance lent by the city to help make each Juneteenth Celebration a success. We are very grateful for the city services that assist us in helping keep people safe, and we also enjoy the fact that this is an opportunity for the community to come together and lift each other up. Yes, it's a moment to observe the past, but it's also an opportunity to focus on the future and being a positive impact not only on the county, the city, the state, but also each part contributes to bettering the nation as a whole. Thank you.
(applause)
Is that a radio voice or what?
That is a radio voice.
If I had that voice, I'd talk all the time.
May I ask Carrie to make a special presentation?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I do make the presentation, I do want to make one quick announcement. Our farmer's market that we do here will start this Friday on the 17th from 7:00 to 12:00, and it'll run through September the 2nd. We have changed the location a little bit. Instead of being down at Morana Park, we had a few folks that couldn't physically able walk down to meet the vendors, so we're moving it into the amphitheater parking lot. I got with Hugh, and he thought it would be a great idea, so we're gonna use the amphitheater parking lot, put the vendors down towards Megan and, I mean, towards Albert Raines, and then the parking lot people can park fairly close and get out and walk to where they're needing to go. So that'll start this Friday, and we have 13 vendors signed up right now. At this time, though, this is something that we talked about in the council. Janet Terrence, the manager of Knocklilah Falls, wanted to do something to help after the tornado hit in April, and we brought it to you about making a weekend, designating a weekend for tornado relief, and taking a dollar of each ticket of sales on that particular weekend, and you saw fit for us to do it two weekends, so we did. We did it May the 21st and 22nd, and 28th and 29th, two weekends of Saturday and Sunday, and we took a dollar from each ticket. And today, we're ready, and we actually called it Helping Rebuild Your Neighbors. We had a sign put up out front where everybody could see it, and at this time, I'm gonna let Janet Terrence and Heather New come up, the Executive Director of the Red Cross, and let Janet present the check to them, and we appreciate y'all allowing us to do this.
On behalf of the Mayor, the Council, and the City of Gaston, we'd like to present Heather New, the Director of Red Cross, with a check for $2,093 for all the help and the support to Edewah County. (applause)
I just want to express my appreciation. We get a tremendous amount of support from you guys, and it means the world to us to know that you believe in what we do. And anytime you would like to come visit our chapter and be involved, we're Monday through Friday, we're still helping tornado victims in Edewah, Cherokee, Calhoun, and Blount Counties, I'm sorry, St. Clair Counties, and we would love for you to come share and be a part of that as well, but we appreciate this so much, this will go a long way.
Unfinished business and ordinance, amending City Code Section 659. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It would remove the exemption to the restriction from selling alcoholic beverages on on-premise consumption within the 300 feet of a church or school building in B-3 and B-4 District. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion, we approve.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Well...
There's no vote, we don't have a second.
Yeah, he just said.
I just said. Oh, you did say.
Yeah, he did say.
Sleeping there.
That's okay. I'm gonna wake you up.
Roll call vote, please.
No, we got, I think we're in a discussion.
Oh, we're in a discussion?
I thought that's what he's asked for, was discussion.
Motion and second, it's time to discuss.
Okay, well, I'm ready to discuss. You know, I brought this up for a number of reasons, and I was hoping that my fellow councilpeople would search their souls and look at some things. Let me just remind the public of some of the things that we've done when it comes down to dealing with alcoholic beverages and licenses. For instance, there was the sports page, sports bar, sports page on 4th Street. You know, some of my learned councilmembers that are here today, we did some special exceptions for that particular establishment. I think it was within the 300 feet of a church, and I'm not sure yet, I didn't get a chance to go back and do the research on that. They're not in the B-4 zone, but they're now in the B-3 zone, but I don't know if they was in the B-3 zone at that time, but let's just assume that maybe they were. I know definitely we didn't have a Class II licenses at that time, and I think they went back and asked for a Class II licenses. We went and opened up the opportunity for them to get a Class II license. They got their Class II license, and then right after that, we shut it down again. So we do special things for special folks, you know, and that's all I'm saying. We just need to be consistent, and I just want us to have a consistent law or consistent, whatever it is, to make sure that we treat all businesses the same. We don't single out certain businesses and certain folks, and we make exceptions for them. And then when John Q. Citizen come along who don't have the connections and don't have the wherewithal, we just throw them by the wayside. I see the news people out there writing and stuff. I have all the information upstairs, I'll be glad to furnish you guys a copy with what we did, who voted for it, and who didn't vote for it, and the whole nine yards, but please, gentlemen, search your souls when you start voting for issues and make sure you try to be consistent with them when you vote on them.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna step in and just say one thing. While you're researching that, Mr. Media, look at your club licenses and see how we came down to one, and then all of a sudden, it went out of business, and we weren't gonna have any more, and then all of a sudden, this council voted where you could, anybody could have a club license, 24/7 liquor sales, and look at who voted for that. Okay?
Any other discussion? And I'll vote for it first, and I wrote no.
I don't see a reason for a roll call vote, but you can do it.
Not necessarily. I don't, I think everybody's on the same page here. There's not necessarily a roll call, just vote on it.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
I think the vote is unanimous for no.
9 through 15, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearings allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance and baitment liens against property. This is for grass cutting that has already been performed, and we have seven locations. We're going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. Number 9 is 1511 Listfield Avenue in District 1, $586. John H. Wiley and care of Terry Wiley. 818 Rosewood Lane, District 2, $1,051. State of Alabama Property Tax Division, Tammage Alford. 1125 Christopher Avenue, District 3, $736. State of Alabama Property Tax Division and Daniel Warren Owens. 916 Edgewood Drive, District 5, $211. SFS LLC and care of Agent Donald Thomason Jr. 1310 Charles Street, District 7, $481. Sonia Cowser Branch, Virginia Barfield. 2202 Lookout Avenue, District 7, $166. William F. Hawker, State of Alabama Property Tax Division. 2705 Lookouts Avenue, District 7, $301. Alan Dunn and Terry Lane Beard. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all seven.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all seven resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all seven.
Do we need Ginny back? Ginny?
I guess we can go forward, Ginny.
Okay.
I'm not sure what happened.
Resolution appointing members to the Harrison Avenue Architectural Review Board. This reappoints Scott Swan, Justin Gilleyhan, Kathy Mylum for terms expiring September the 15th, 2013, and appoints Carol Davis to replace Cheryl Brown to fulfill the term expiring December the 15th, 2011. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
17 is a resolution appointing members to the Turntine Avenue Architectural Review Board. This reappoints George Wise, Susan Little, and Rosanna Perkins for terms expiring September the 15th, 2013. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to these people who are willing to serve on these committees. They're non-paying committees, of course, and they're citizens that take an interest in their neighborhood, and I just want to say thank you. Appreciate y'all serving really.
Is there any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
18 is a resolution authorizing change order number 1 for bid 3132. This is for construction of Americans with Disabilities Act compliant restroom painting of the theater and lobby, plumbing and electrical upgrades to the Ritz Theater. The amount is $82,971, thereby adjusting the contract with modern heating and cooling to $545,401. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? These two big figures of 500 and 600, the 600 is a total. These two were done at the same time, the Ritz Theater and the Pittman Theater. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
19 is a resolution authorizing change order number 2 for bid 3132. This is for electrical upgrades, interior painting, restoration of concrete floor, and construction of rooms for fire sprinkler controls and storage at the Pittman Theater. This amount is $80,028.45, thereby adjusting the contract with modern heating and cooling to $625,429.45. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
$600,000 is covering both of those theaters. Am I correct on that?
Total.
That was a total.
It's a running total, yeah.
And we had some grant money that went into that also.
And the rest of the money is coming from tax increment financing funds, which I'll explain when we get to the next. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
20 is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2011 budget and authorizing tax increment financing funds for change order related to the Pittman and Ritz Theaters HVAC renovation projects.
Mr. President, if there's no objections, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to go ahead and act on that today. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now make a motion, we approve. Second.
Any discussion?
God, you can talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. I appreciate that. This authorizes the use of the TIF funds for the rehabilitation of these two historic Tax increment financing is a good, we divided the city up into different areas in the downtown and really the business districts, and now I don't think we have but one district, but it covers all the businesses. They, I say the development over where Walmart is is a good example. The houses that were bought and torn down, the added lower tax was very little. I've forgotten exactly how much, but I was amazed at how little the tax was on all the houses that we just tore down for the development. The difference between that tax and what the lower tax now goes into this tax increment financing fund. The money has to be spent in that district, so it's turned out to be a good way for us to do infrastructure in the downtown and districts. It's really, it's really been good. Anyway, that's where the money's coming from. It's not coming from the taxes on individuals, but the taxes on the businesses, and the money goes back into infrastructure for those businesses. Any other discussion?
I think you explained it pretty, pretty much, and again, that sets aside a special fund so we can help develop businesses within those districts, and like you say, it's been a good thing for us. We've been able to offset costs and help new businesses and old businesses improve.
That's right. Mayor, you want to say anything on that?
Mr. President, I did have one other thing, and we had some good discussion upstairs regarding change orders, and I don't, while I don't think there's any issue with these two, I do want to thank the Engineering Department for the high level of scrutiny that they're placing on change orders in general, to ensure that they're adequate and that they don't get out of hand, so, and I don't think anybody on this council disagrees with that. I think we do have a stewardship responsibility to make sure we watch those very closely.
Mr. President, I have a question now. We said this TIF funds here are represented out of District 1. You said we only had one district. How many districts do we have?
I think we just have one now, isn't it? Is that right, Roger?
Just one?
Well, TIF district.
Just one TIF district.
But it covers probably just about all seven council districts.
Well, that's what I'm referring to, the TIF districts.
Yeah, there's one TIF.
Only one TIF district.
Right, but it covers...
Like you've got yours, and I've got Knocklilah Road.
You can get, we got maps that show the whole thing, if you want to get one.
We shared, Cheryl.
Okay.
And money can be used where it's necessary.
Yeah, I think when we first started off, we had maybe three or four, maybe four districts, I think, and then we expanded it, and then we just saw fit to go ahead and consolidate and have just the one district, but it covers all those business areas, District 2, I think everybody's got some of it.
Yeah, it seems like it was done so that if these monies have to be spent in that district, then all monies from all businesses can be spent anywhere in the city in the one district, and there won't be any, anything that has been done wrong.
Yeah, 'cause see, every district would have been ahead of everybody if it would just did it within city council districts.
Right, right.
What's wrong with that? Because Wal-Mart bought a lot of money in.
Yeah, now we sharing it.
Now we sharing your money.
All right, that was my question.
Okay. Did we tie the vote yet?
Not yet.
We tried.
There's no other, you can take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, any new business? How about that? No new business.
I mean, I could come up with something if you want me to.
No, that's all right.
Oh, okay. I thought you were looking for something.
Department reports, committees, boards, I don't know any.
We have Amanda Jackson here this morning from the Gaston Public Library. I think she wants to say a few words, or her representative wants to say a few words. Great.
Thank you. I'm Alexis Nowr, I'm the Children's Librarian at Gaston Public Library, and I just want to tell everyone about our summer reading program we have going on. It's a really great program. We do every Fridays at 9:00 a.m. and 10:30, we have different performers. So this week, we're having a face painter and storyteller, and next week, we're having a magician, we're having live animals at the end of the summer, and the 9:00 a.m. is less crowded for parents, so they know, and they get prizes at the end of the show. We also have a summer reading contest where for every book children read, they get to move around the world, and whoever makes it around first gets a whole pizza. So it's getting competitive, so get your kids out there. And we have movies every Wednesday at 3:30. We have, we try to get the newest DVDs to show for them, and we have popcorn. This week, we're showing Despicable Me, we have Tangled later in the month, and Thursdays, we have our regular story times at 10:00 a.m., and we do songs and educational activities, stories, a craft, we have a snack, and it's a lot of fun. We always have something going on, so just wanted to let everyone know about that.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda, you're a department, so you can speak anytime, and when I call on the departments to speak, you don't have to wait till they're in.
Well, I would like to ask Amanda, this information that we were just given about the schedules, the times of the events at the library, where can, where can our citizens avail themselves of this schedule?
On our website.
On the website?
Gaston Library.
Gastonlibrary.org.
We can put it on 99.
It will be on 99 also. Thank you, that's what I was really getting for, on Channel 99. Same place, you see?
My PC don't work.
These wonderful proceedings that are being held appear every Tuesday at 11 o'clock.
Was that a facetious statement?
That was a dig.
My PC doesn't work.
I do, I would like to thank Amanda, I don't know if all y'all know or not, I think on Channel 99, I think it's Discover Gaston, is that what it's called? Every now and then, I tune in to see y'all, and y'all do a real good job explaining what's going on in Gaston, at the library, at the Cultural Arts Center, just everything that's going on in town. Does that once a month, y'all do that? Twice a month? I do appreciate y'all doing that for us.
And she always has cokes, cookies, all that sort of thing that we really appreciate.
We have an outstanding librarian at Gaston.
Absolutely.
Amanda does a great job, so I encourage all your parents to bring those children down to the library and take advantage of these programs. They're great programs.
Okay, remarks by the Mayor and the Council. Johnny, you had been here a while, so you...
Yeah, I'll go first. I appreciate it, Mr. President. Sorry I wasn't here last week, I was in the hospital. I did a little hospital stay for about three days, but I'm better, I'm getting back going. I did watch the council meeting last Tuesday, it was interesting, I gotta give y'all that, it was interesting. Hate I missed it, maybe everything's gonna run smooth now, we can get back going. And I'd like to ask the Mayor if we could get something published on 99 and on maybe the newspaper about the mosquito spraying program. I bet a lot of people don't know what day they're gonna spray and what area in town.
Put it on 99.
So we can, you know, let those people know all about that, because everybody's wanting to know about it. I do appreciate all the prayers and concerns everybody had for me last week and all the phone calls. That's all I got.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've, I mentioned some time ago that I was really gonna be driving and pushing an effort to try to establish a youth summit in the city, so there've been a group of folks that have come together and tried to support me in that, and we actually had a very productive meeting last night, and I can tell you that we will have a youth summit, probably in the late August, early September timeframe, more details to come regarding that, but we're really excited about where that's gonna go. You know, right now, the plan is for that to basically be an event for high school age students up to age 19, I believe, and of course, we will, we're more than likely gonna have a, it'll be twofold, we'll have a panel discussion, hopefully bringing in some local personalities as well as some celebrity personalities to serve on the panel, and we'll follow it with a social event for the young people. And again, you know, I want to be clear, I said this in the beginning, and I'll say it now, I don't think another summit or another event is gonna fix the issues that we have that are related to our young people, but it can serve to give us something on a revolving basis that exists on our calendar. on a revolving basis that exists on our calendar, and, and it could also serve as a great forum for us to address the needs and the issues of our young people, so stay, again, stay tuned for more details as it relates to that. And I want to thank Kerry Payne for an update that he gave me earlier, and mark this on your calendar, 'cause this will be the last time I publicly thank Kerry for anything, but, but thank Kerry for, for the update. I'd ask him to, to look into a, into formalizing to some degree the basketball circuit that used to exist years ago, and I was advised that that really has, has never really stopped. They, they've continued that basketball circuit, and at some level, the Parks and Rec Department is supporting it, and I think they play through 9:00 p.m. in the evenings at a, a different gym, so again, if our young people are looking for a way to get off the street and, and a way to, to be involved in something that can be productive, there's an opportunity, yet another opportunity. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Bill?
Hi, we just, this morning received our, our financial status of the city, and I'm just gonna say we're very, very fortunate in Gadsden, our revenue is up just a little bit from last year, which is unusual for the, this economy that we're in nationwide, so we're very fortunate here, and certainly commend the administration for keeping a close eye on our, our finances, so we're doing well in Gadsden, that's all I have.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to commend the Parks and Recreation Department, first of all, on the contribution that they made to the Red Cross in order to help those people who have been, the lives have been turned upside down and ravished by tornadoes, and everything that you've done will be very greatly appreciated, we're sure. That's, that's another example of the, the type of a Parks and Recreation team that we have here in Gadsden. I would like to also give kudos to the Parks and Recreation Department, because they have certainly worked with us in everything that we've asked for and everything that we've requested, they have worked with us and provided it for us. I would just like to say that, that our citizens, the people who want to use these facilities need to become involved, because Kerry will work with anybody on any program to get anything done as far as recreation's concerned in the city of Gadsden. I'd also like to give kudos to the library again, and I will continue to do that. As Ben said, we, Bill said, we have one of the best libraries in the state of Alabama, without a doubt, and I have to encourage everyone to participate in these summer programs, and that was my reason for asking, how people can get these schedules of these dates, because they'll be on channel 99, and you can go to the Gadsden, Gadsdenlibrary.org and get those times. And thirdly, I'd like to say, you know, when a mistake has been done, you correct a mistake, and if a mistake has happened, doesn't necessarily mean you have to continue making that same mistake. Thank you.
Mayor?
Let me go last, I want to talk a little bit about finances. That'll be okay?
Okay, Ben?
Yeah, I want, along the lines of what Bill was talking about, I've watched TV and I see what's happening in Jefferson County, cutting back on the police force, cutting back on services, and we don't have that problem because we've done a real sound job, and I think the mayor is to be committed for that also, and the council, because the council after all is responsible for that. So I think we're in real good shape, in fact, I know we are. I did want to welcome a friend of mine, he's visiting here, he's lived his whole life in this city, and he, he never came by to a council meeting, and I said, why not? He said, well, I didn't know how to, how to get there. And I said, well, it's City Hall, big old place, you know? Billy Williamson, and he's a visitor of mine this morning, I wanted to welcome Billy. That's what I.
Is he here?
He's in the back, back there.
Oh, yeah.
I tried to get Billy to sit up front and be on TV, but he would not do that. He's way back in the back, y'all, on the right inside, neither will he stand up, so welcome Billy.
Mr. President, before we go to the next speaker, I, I, I forgot, I needed to mention that my wife is here in the audience today. She surprised me, she surprised me when she walked in, and I had no idea that she was gonna be here today, but it's good to have her here in attendance today, to see her beautiful face out there in the audience.
I wonder how you're gonna go home.
Yeah.
We're happy to have you. Mayor?
I just want to talk a little bit about the finances. Of course, we have a report out. I'm sorry.
You want to go last?
Well, it don't matter, I can get it now, you can go ahead, and I. Go ahead.
I mean, you wanted to go last.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm excited. I thought he, I thought he said mayor.
When I started talking, I, I only have a couple things.
Bob said he thought you had anything to say.
I only have a couple of things.
Bob, are you kidding me?
I, I just want to make mention the fact that my District Three meeting will be this Saturday at the Carver Community Center, I know there's a lot going on out there, but I will be meeting at my regular meeting place this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the Carver Community Center. And then I want to thank everyone for their calls and their prayers, as you know, my wife Janet is in, in the hospital, had her second surgery on yesterday in the last few weeks, and she's doing fine. She's a little bit out of, out of it right now with all the pain and the medicine and everything, and that's a good thing. You know, hopefully by the time she gets out and gets back, they won't, she won't see this, but, you know, it, I think the grandkids were having fun with her last night, talking to her and, and trying to get her to remember some of the things she was saying, but at any rate, we just thank you for your prayers and continue to pray for us, and she's got a, a long, long recovery coming out of this particular operation. That's all I have. Now, Mayor?
I'll make sure she gets a copy of this.
Hey, man.
I, I love you too, Mayor.
I just wanted to go a few things, it's pretty interesting, and we got copies if anybody wants them, I think probably the media already has one, but we're in the eighth month. As of May 2011, the overall general fund revenues were $31 million, $31 million and $79, which represents overall increase of 1.3, or almost $400,000 increase. But 1.3 is not really big when you look at 45.5 million budget, but it's at least in the positive section. The four major sources of revenues, our sales tax collections were $12 million, which represents an increase of 1.4, or 170,600 from last year. Occupational license fees were up 8.8 million, which represents a 1.2, or 102,800 from fiscal year 10. Again, it's always encouraging when we have two revenues that represent 71% of our overall revenues are up from last year. Ad valorem taxes were 2.02 million, which represents an increase of 3.8. Business license were 5.8 million, which represents a decrease of minus 1%. Other general revenue funds are as follows, gasoline tax is up 9.1%, beer tax is down 14.1%, lodging tax is up 6.4%, recreational services 1 point, up 1.6, and municipal court fines are down 5%. And looking at the overall general fund expenses, we are at 60.9% of a 66.7% budget. This would represent us being under budget by 5.8%. Personnel costs were 61.7%, which were under budget there by 5%, and operating costs were 58.4, which represents us being under budget by 8.3%. And that is mainly how we've been able to stay in a positive situation, because revenues have not been up a lot in the last couple of years, but we continue to watch our expenses and hold them down, so we come out in a plus situation. There's three enterprise funds which are operating at a loss for the fiscal year, the airport fund is $42,000 negative, the revenue is generated from rentals at the air depot. Twin Bridges Golf Course has a loss of 154,600, that doesn't include city expenses, and the residential garbage fund is losing 348,000, and that's mainly to the two things, one, we had to expand and we opened up a new part of the landfill, and we have a lot of uncollectible garbage accounts, which we're gonna start paying a lot more attention to. So, you know, I want to remind you that reserves, we do have reserves, and they're just a little less than three months of operating expenses, but if you follow the news in many cities and counties and even states, not only in Alabama but nationwide, they're laying off, cutting services, even public safety, which is police and fire, we're not doing any of these things. We've had over $300 million in capital investments, over 3,000 jobs saved and added, and approximately 800 to 900 in commercial development, and we're gonna keep being conservative as we do the 2012 budget, and we're gonna be aggressive in the recruitment of industrial and commercial developments to boost our revenues, because a lot of the retail and commercial people are starting to look around again, which we didn't have any of that for probably about the last two years. But overall, I think we're really in a, in good shape, and there seems to be a lot of positive activity going on. Thank you.
Mayor, we can, we can improve that municipal court fine, we can get, recover that minus 5% by enforcing the laws and little ordinances. We can get that 5% back.
That's, that's a, that's a real good report. We're driving more and drinking less.
I'm not gonna say anything about the other one that's down.
Okay.
Ain't nothing we can do.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn. We adjourn.